Okay. Ladies and gentlemen, we will call to order. Mr. Clerk, do we have a quorum?
Yes, we do.
Are there any disclosures of pecuniary interest to declare? Counselor Holland.
Thank you. I am Mary Rita Holland of the Council of the Corporation of the City of Kingston, declare my pecuniary interest in the matter of Cultural Services. Report on page fifty-eight, as I am an employee of Salon Theatre, which has received funds from Cultural Services in 2014. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other disclosures of pecuniary interest? Okay, seeing none. We have no delegations tonight, and so we will move right to where we left off with departmental presentations. So next, or on deck, is Corporate and Strategic Initiatives. Commissioner Beach.
It's on? No. I actually think I have a shot at the trophy, and after two nights of budget meetings, I think you're all rooting for me. So I'm going to start along. The mayor particularly likes that one. I'm going to start just with a quick introduction. So Peter Hugan-Boss is the manager of Real Estate and Land Development. We have Paul McClatchy, who's the director of Environment and Sustainable Initiatives. We have Colin Wiggington, who is our director of Cultural Services. Susan Nicholson, who's our director of Legal Services. And at the center of it all, John Bolignone, city clerk and the director of Human Resources and Organizational Development, is unable to be here tonight, so I will answer any questions related to that budget. So in terms of the, I'm going to try and go through and recap what the treasurer has already provided as the first statement and summarized through the presentation, where she's indicated where there are pressures and where we're working on cost efficiency things. If you look at our budget within our own group, you can see that although there are some areas where we're looking at some additional investment across the board, we're also trying to adjust down. And you can see that a number of the different departments are adjusting their totals down, and it is a combination of different things that they're working on within their departments to try and maintain costs at or below the inflation line, and also looking at doing things differently. I'll have to say that in terms of the actual cost efficiencies and where we're looking at trying to keep a cap on the cost for municipal services, a lot of these groups provide corporate services across the whole corporation. So a lot of their initiatives that they work on, you won't actually see in their budgets, but we'll see the impact across. And I'm going to try to summarize as I go through the main ones that they're working on, and it is in your binders on page fifty-eight summary. So the main capital amounts, I'll go into in more detail, about 2.3 million across Environment, Cultural Services, and Real Estate and Land Development. Within the commissioner's office, we work on a number of leadership for different projects, strategic projects, so things like the renewal of the Sustainable Community Plan. We'll be bringing back to council a strategy on how we're going to go forward for that. Also with federal divestitures, you're all aware of one that we are currently dealing with, and we have another very significant one that's coming up this year, that Public Works has also told us that they'd like to divest the Causeway. So that is one area that we will have to spend some significant resources in responding to. In terms of advancement of the corporate sustainability initiatives as well, we work within the corporation, and we also work with Sustainable Kingston, who is our partner in the community, that's a not-for-profit corporation, and there's a member of council that's appointed to that board, Jeff McLaren, will be the representative on the Sustainable Kingston Board, and we work both within the corporation and out in the community to try and support those initiatives. There also are a number of other different things that are supported within the commissioner's office, so new regulations, like the source water protection. We provide research and comments back to the province, and as those are implemented, we help pass them along. And we also provide assistance for other initiatives in the other departments, most significantly probably the brownfields and industrial land review. Overall, the costs are going down in the area, so there's a decrease in staffing that's occurred within that area over the past year or couple of years. Within Real Estate and Land Development, when Mr. Keach spent the time going through all of the plans, a lot of our real estate work is related to the master plans. So when the transportation master plan or other master studies identify that there's a property acquisition that needs to take place, the Real Estate Division provides support in a lot of those areas. They also look at servicing of employment land. So the city is playing the role of a developer in terms of making sure that there is land available and is ready for businesses to expand here or to locate here. In order to have that not compete with other municipal services, we've been developing a more sophisticated model and looking at the pricing for industrial lands. So in our model, when we actually go and sell industrial land, we are recovering the cost for that, so that rather than having the municipal taxpayers pay for any of that, we recover it from the sale of the lands. And we develop strategies on how to maximize those sale prices as well, so that we also have an ability to recover our costs for servicing. So the big acquisitions are going to correspond with all of the work that you've seen that's happening in engineering and utilities, and it matches up for the most part in terms of the John Connor Boulevard widening is one of the significant ones that we're doing land acquisition for to complete. And I think also when the indication was said that we are doing a very good job of having projects that are shovel-ready in order for grants, the Real Estate Division is one of the critical pieces that we get ahead of that and make sure that we acquire the lands that are needed for those road widens. So when there is a grant that's announced, we can go ahead and do those projects, and they're shovel-ready. We have one complete process that we're going through now for requests for information, requests for proposal on 305-323 Rito Street, so that's better known as the Broome Factory that we're going through. So we're looking at selling those lands for redevelopment and meeting the objectives that council has described in those. And all of the work that we do, unless council decides that there is something different, is matched with our master plans in terms of where we're going ahead and looking at the employment lands. We'll have a report that's back to council later this year that updates you on where we're at with those lands. So in terms of the capital budget, there are some monies that are in our whip that we're continuing to proceed. Some of these projects take a number of years on some of the land acquisitions. We have budgeted for money specifically for the federal divestitures and specifically for the Causeway, when those discussions start with the federal government as well, as well as in the employment lands. The source of funding for all of these come from the reserve funds that are identified. So if it's a development charges or if it's funded from another source, that's where these capital budgets are funded from. Another very small project that is looking at being completed this year is the gateway signage. So those are the welcome signs that would be at the Wolf Island Ferry via station. We're working with the private landowners and Ken Co. to put a welcoming sign, as well as look at where there's MTO signs to update those. Environment and Sustainable Initiatives, they work on providing corporate services across the corporation for environmental services. So they deal with a lot of risk management and environmental management of properties for all city-owned properties. They will continue their focus on the failed tax sale process. So when a failed tax sale property comes up, they actively look at ways to try and have that remediated, and they have a number of programs that they'll implement. So once they identify the tax sale properties for brownfield remediation, they bring that through the process and approvals through to council in terms of having those properties remediated and then develop it happen, and then the tax assessment come back on to the, into the revenue stream. They also do a lot of work on closed landfills, so the Kingston East landfill, so monitoring and ongoing projects related to the ongoing risk with those properties and making sure that they're managed in a responsible manner, and provide due diligence on a lot of these projects, as well as support for corporate and community carbon accounting and looking at a corporate plan for greenhouse gas reduction, and they support the community sustainability planning as well. So their capital budgets, again, are focused around brownfields, the municipal energy planning, landfills, and municipal site cleanups. One of the most significant cleanup projects that we're looking at doing is the Orchard Marsh, which is at the south part of the Bell Park landfill where the stormwater comes through. So we'll be looking at doing work there that keeps the stormwater and maintains the stormwater that's coming out from that outfall, and they'll also be looking at doing an environmental management system software to make sure that the environmental management is applied consistently across the corporation. Cultural Services, we actually provided a couple of handouts, too, that were in color that we can make available to anyone in the public that would like as well. But I'm going to actually move in terms of the slide presentation to present, because the Cultural Services Group really is, we did a cultural plan that identified where we wanted to see impact in the community. And in terms of a Cultural Services Department, our department is a little bit different than what you might find in a traditional municipality, that they are looking at the quality of life and looking at ways to try and promote that quality life within the community, not just with the city facilities that we have, but in community development, in looking at trying to find ways to have community groups support culture within the community. And these are the key theme areas that we want to focus on over the next number of years. And council, in the past, through the cultural plan, there were sixty objectives that were identified, and we've been implementing those over the years. It was a ten-year plan, so we're still in the process of implementing those. And when you look at the summary of all the things that we've been working at, we are trying to improve and reach out to more participants with our programming that we have, the Grand Theatre, as well as our museums and City Hall, which is becoming part of our, rather than looking at facility-based cultural activities, of trying to look at bringing activities to where people are, and also trying to expand out to where more people come. We have the launch of the TET Center that's happening this year as well, and will, that opening will be happening in a week from now, I believe, ribbon cutting. So we're very happy that that will be opening for the first year. We have our Cultural Resource Mapping Plan that we're implementing. So one of the things we heard from the community is that if we knew what was out there and we knew what was going on and we could access that information, we could actually do our own engagement and our own partnering with other groups. So that Cultural Resource Mapping has been very successful in putting out what we actually have in Kingston and making it available. We do have a modest expansion that's planned for the Pump House Steam Museum to make it more accessible, and I'll show a picture of the washrooms when we come to that as well. And we also will continue on with our use strategy and the implementation of that use strategy. And I'm going to show a slide a little bit that's coming up on the investment part. So we've identified that we wanted to have a better plan with the community and our other community stakeholders around cultural heritage and cultural tourism. So we will be bringing back, we had some seed money to develop a plan, to do some pilot initiatives, and with the stakeholders who are also contributing funds, we're going to come back with a plan before we spend any more money in terms of the cultural heritage and cultural tourism strategy. So some of the other new things that we have underway, Sir John A. Activities, which there obviously was an event that happened that was very successful, but we're continuing the programming through the year. We also are going to look at digital strategy and trying to look at mobile apps and other ways that we can broaden the interaction, web interactions with the community as well. Our public art is planned to start halfway through this year as well, so it's partially budgeted for starting in this year. And then we have a number of different capital programs, smaller ones that are planned for. And the picture of the washroom is up in the corner. You can see that there's steps that you have to get up to the washroom, and that's in the woodworking, or sorry, in the Pump House Museum, and they're quite narrow. So we're looking at trying to put accessible facilities into the Pump House Museum. In terms of the implementation of the culture plan, we got council approval to have an increase in investment in cultural services. And one of the things that we looked at was we want to slow down the pace in some of that investment to make sure that the investment that we are and have already made, that we can measure that and make sure that it's effective and that the community is ready for that investment. So that's the reason mainly, to try and draw that over a number of years, and then also to look for ways, as you see on the line items, where you see some budgets going up and some going down, that we look for ways to try and not just increase the budget, but decrease overall budgets and find the investment there as well. So I have provided, if this is hard to see, a multi-year, step by step, in terms of the culture investment, what we've included in the budget. So if you look at the first column, that's the only column that you're looking at improving. And where there's no dollar signs beside it, that means that there's no additional funds that have been requested within that budget, but we'll be continuing on with that strategy. So Arts Fest is something that we're looking at with, it's funded through grant funding, and we're trying to partner up the arts community with the business community. We have the use strategy that would be continuing with Recreation and Leisure. We also have an expanded summer programming, and we're looking for partners to more than match the investment that we've made, and we already have a number of partners locally that are prepared to come forward with funding for that. I've talked about most of these other ones. The TET Center, the investment is because while it was a construction project, it was carried under the construction budget. It's now coming back in as a building, and this adjustment is for the actual costs of running the building in the first year of operations. The two funds that really have a big impact in the community, the City Kingston Arts Fund and the Heritage Fund, council approves the criteria for those funds on an annual basis, so you can decide when the plan comes to you how you want to prioritize those. We are only proposing an inflation increase at this point for those funds, and we looked at benchmarking against other municipalities to look at. We're not at the top of the end, we're not at the bottom, we're somewhere in the middle right now in terms of funding for those. One of the things that I will point out for council, though, that this is your fund that you have identified to support community groups. You will be asked on many occasions to waive fees or to find additional funding for groups. And what we always do is point the groups towards your grant funding that you've identified, that you've prioritized, and you've said that you want to fund. So these are the opportunities for the community groups to come forward. It is a competitive process that they have to go through, and it's judged by other community groups, and only the most significant projects will get funding. The other thing that we're looking at, and it's in your description that you have in your binder, is we're looking at trying to partner with the Trillium Foundation, which does provide even more grants, and find a way to use the community index of well-being to gauge the impact of those grants, so that we can measure them and make sure that the impacts in the community are achieving what we want over time as well. The bottom line is for cultural tourism, and we will only expend those funds when we come back to council and if you approve the strategies that come back. So the capital budgets line up with those initiatives, and that's what's in the budget. There is some funds within the whip, because we had to plan for the Sir John A. Events, for instance, that are rolling out this year, and we will continue to spend those over the year. And I'm going to keep moving along to Human Resource and Organizational Development. So we have had a program where we're looking at a continued leadership development program across the city. We've had as many municipalities, a lot of senior staff that are looking at retirement and whatnot, and we've really looked internally to try and promote staff across the corporation, look at our talent management, and look at ways that we can get, keep, retain, and have our best staff that we can. We have introducing for this year, there's going to be an enhanced corporate recognition, so that's just internally for staff to recognize when we see exceptional customer service, for instance, or other things that we might have across the corporation. We have been continuing to increase the corporate health and safety culture, and we are now also starting to implement more wellness programs across the organization to look at the organizational wellness, as well as the individual health of staff. And one of the items that was pointed out by the treasurer in the beginning of the presentation was that our benefit costs are one of the things that are rising above inflation. So around this, we have a number of initiatives that we're looking at wellness, we're looking at the cost of benefits, and we're looking at ways to try and keep those in check. Last, but not least, the legal services, oh no, I'm not even at last, legal services. So the point that those finance at the beginning made around insurance is one of the main focus areas for the legal services. So they do insurance management for the corporation, in addition to looking at the Provincial Offenses Court. They will be increasing their focus and their diligence around the claims management and looking at ways to try and mitigate the budget costs. We know that across municipalities, every municipality is seeing their insurance increase, and we will be looking at ways to implement strategies around keeping those costs in check. So the city clerk, the main focus and things that they will be looking at this year will be around the council orientation education. Again, as the new sets of committees come up, they will have training, and they'll have opportunities to ensure that those committees have an opportunity to see what they're expected, what's expected from council. One of the things that they're looking at from an efficiency perspective is technology, so less paper and more technology, because every time there's a piece of paper, it has to go out physically, it has to be filed physically, and there's all the management that goes into that. So they're looking at ways to be more efficient around records control and making sure that we meet our regulatory requirements, but have it done in a more efficient way. And they also will be looking at the non-statutory citizen committees this year to look at ways that we might better align that with the strategy of council, and there'll be a report coming back in terms of suggested changes and different options for council to look at. And they also will be bringing back this year the report that's on the municipal election. So that is the end of my presentation, and if there are any questions, we're happy to take them.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions? Counselor Neal.
Yes, a couple to do with culture, first of all. I know that one of the things that I always applauded in a long-term cultural plan was the whole idea of cultural hubs. I don't see in the capital budget for this year any forecasted funds for cultural hubs. And I know that sometimes they might be locations that we're doing a kind of shared development between Parks and Rack and Culture Department, like we're doing in the Rito Heights area. But I'm just wondering, A, if we still have a full commitment to that, because I think that's a really good idea, and B, I'll ask the CAO if, or whoever might be able to answer, perhaps the treasurer, the question. I know libraries qualify for some development funds. Would a cultural hub qualify, at least in part, to be funded by development fees?
So there's two questions, so I'll go to the question about cultural hubs. Do you want Commissioner Beach?
Do you want me?
Mr. Wiggington.
Through your worship, that's a great question, and certainly we're still very much focused and dedicated to that concept. So obviously, the TET Center is the most obvious manifestation of a cultural hub that's very much focused on infrastructure, but there's a number of different initiatives that we're working on. You've already flagged that we're working very closely with Recreation and Leisure to make sure that the Rito Heights development functions as a cultural hub in that context. Council also directed us to work with the Alderville First Nation on a commemoration project. And in fact, in terms of getting ready for that work, we've been doing a community needs assessment, and the notion of space hub, you know, opportunities for gathering is something that's very significant to that. And you've also referenced as well the library system, and we've been approached by Patricia Enright and others at the library to talk about how their infrastructure can also support this notion. So I think what's interesting about the whole hub concept is that we're trying to get away from a focus on capital infrastructure and figure out ways that are meaningful for the communities and constituencies that need those opportunities and that we're working with.
Thank you.
And then CEO Hunt, did you want to respond to the development?
Thank you. So through your worship, so the question was whether or not development charges would pay for some of the costs related to the expansion of developer, development hubs. So development charges is quite a rigorous process in terms of determining what the service levels are in order to then charge the same level of service against new development. And so the way that would actually roll out is if there were, if there was funding for, say, some library materials or library expansion and a cultural hub was in there, then theoretically there's funding that's going into more that library space than it is necessary for public. So the direct answer is no, it wouldn't be for cultural hubs, but it would be for other spaces that could also be used as that hub, for that hub activity.
And again, cultural services, I'm really looking forward to the public art kickoff this year. I know that, and I've always said, we've always had cultural hubs, we used to always call them libraries. So it's good to hear that you're working collaboratively with the library on some of these initiatives, and it's good to see that, I think, we're back on track for the ten-year plan completion of it. So I look forward to working on that in the future as well. Quick question for environment, and this may be a question that the CAO may want to answer, or the commissioner in part. I know that we do an excellent job of maintaining employment lands, and usually there, in the past, we've done those as greenfield preparation for attracting industry. In the old part of the city, we have considerable former employment lands or industrial lands that are now brownfields. Are we looking, and can we continue to look at finding ways to rejuvenate and make those older employment lands available again to develop industrial, commercial, and even perhaps residential, but?
CEO Hunt?
Through your worship, yes. So the, because these divisions or departments are shown as separate, doesn't mean they don't, they don't work together. So there's many different projects in the older part of the city, in the north end particularly, that have been brownfield sites, tax, sites that have been acquired through tax sale and that sort of thing, that have been part of the numerous properties that we have cleaned up and attempted to work with new purchasers to put them back into production. So many of those sites are in the Montreal Street area, and that continues to be a focus, and that's what Commissioner Beach was referring to. Other properties are privately owned, and we always are prepared to work and provide some support. We don't have the CIP area extended into some of those, some of those areas, should it be necessary. There are ways to define other project areas. We always have to remember that although they stimulate the rejuvenation of property, there is a tax component to it, because it does, there's a delay in getting taxes. So it's a bit of a balance, but certainly the priority is to continue to rejuvenate those properties and bring them back into productive use.
Great, thank you. And former landfills, particularly Kingston East, I know that there was some discussion, I'm not sure, I'm sure with staff as well, but there, about the potential for using those for energy, for qualifying for the FIT program. Are we, is that still a consideration on the table potentially for when we get the fix? fix on the, and close the landfill?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, we did in fact look at the feasibility of ground-mounted solar on the Kingston East landfill site after it's properly closed, and the major barrier to that is actually the transmission capacity in that area. It's not, it's not large enough to accommodate the kind of megawatts that would be produced there. So, looked at it, and it was a no.
Another case where it sounds like a great idea on paper, but it isn't feasible. Finally, my last question, I promise. The provincial offenses court that's being proposed to be moved to city property, will that be a revenue generator, and will all the leasehold improvements be the responsibility of the province?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. The movement of the provincial offenses court, it's currently in a provincially-owned facility, and we are moving to a municipal-owned facility, we're moving to 362 Montreal Street. Essentially, what we try and do with provincial offenses is cover costs, and if there is some revenue, which has been declining in recent years, it depends on the amount of enforcement activity that's going on, Highway Traffic Act and things of that nature. So that number goes up and down. But essentially, we will be moving, the rent that we pay today, when we move into our own facility, obviously, there's some chargebacks that go, but that's essentially how it will work.
And leasehold improvements, would we be responsible for?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, in terms of leasehold improvements, as we move into our own facility, those will be managed by the city.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? Councillor Allen.
Thank you, your worship, and through you, just one, I've spent the day trying to figure out, and I can't find it, so I'll need you to help paint it for me, but the cultural services department over the next four years has an operating growth of about $1 million. And I just, I couldn't peg it to any one thing, which is probably a good thing, but if you could maybe dive into where some of that investment's going again, perhaps on this slide here that you're showing me now, but if you could just reiterate that really quickly, that would be fantastic.
So the investment in the cultural services group matches the Culture Master Plan that identified the priorities that we wanted to work on as a community. And I've provided a slide, which if it's too small up there, free to see, you have it in front of you as well, but I've listed out the actual programs that are coming on stream in those years that represent the increase in funding. So where there's not a number beside those items, we're not increasing the funding, we're continuing those programs, but you can see where the items are with the dollars amount, that's where the increases in funding is coming from. So it's, I've done it for the four years, council only approves the first year, so if you go into your strategic planning and decide that you want to move in a different direction, none of these years are approved yet, and they have to be approved on an annual basis.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no other questions, thank you very much. And so we'll move, that was actually very, you're definitely easily in the lead in comparison to all of your other counterparts, so, but there's still one presentation to go, Finance, Technology and Administration. We'll ask Ms. Kennedy to come back.
Thank you, through your worship, I'm just going to do a couple of the departments first, and then Desiree will get into finance and technology. But again, just to point out that I'm not in the running for the shortest prize, just so that you know, and we're also not going to let Desiree in the running for it, because she took up an hour already last week, or last night, so we have to also be fair. In any event, there's just a couple of things I do want to talk to you about. It really relates to the first two lines here in this particular area. Strategic Communications actually reports in now as a result of organizational change directly to my office, and the director of Strategic Communications is right here with us tonight, Colleen Yarrell. Colleen joined us about three months ago now, time does go fast, but I think it is three months. She's already made some substantial changes in the way we communicate and engage and do social media, and in fact, she's here doing the media, the Twitter work at the moment about some of the things that council are discussing. So we're really pleased to see the progress. But before I actually get a little more excited about Strategic Communications, I wanted to talk a little bit about the mayor and council and the CAO's offices. And in particular, it really is a bare budget of mostly made up of salaries, including council's remuneration. It's all set on the basis of the policies that have been established. But there's a few interesting things that I want to talk a little bit about. So we'll be developing a new strategic plan, which has been the guiding document that has been so very useful to staff and, I think, to council, and in fact, to the community that we've all come to know. And the way, the interesting part of this, which I went over before with some of you, but in the back, it's actually a work plan that helps to keep staff aware of the various initiatives that are proceeding over the course of time. So this is still relevant to us. You saw departments talk about works in progress and things that continue on until you formulate your priorities for us. So it's a very effective way to manage the affairs, and we really appreciate both council's input to it and our collective commitment to it. I said the first night that I spoke to you that, you know, it takes departments and a team of departments to have some service costs going down in a budget in order to bring money to the table for other departments to go up. And that's really important, and I think you saw the external agencies last night all come to the table. We have the exact same relationship with them. We sit down with them on an ongoing basis, we ask them to project out in the future, don't bring us surprises when we get here, because we can handle it, there's only so many tax dollars to go around. And again, last night, you saw them being very much in line with where the direction that council had set in terms of what tax rate increases should be. So that work will, it's already started to formulate in terms of some of the priorities that are listed here that the departments are working on, and then it'll culminate with the information that you provide in terms of what your priorities are, and then we'll bring you back a report so that you can say, yeah, that's what we said, go. So committed to do that. I do want to talk about the, these acronyms here, and just talk to you briefly about what they mean. So AMO, the Association of Municipalities of Ontario, Federation of Canadian Municipalities, LUMCO, which is the Large Urban Municipalities of Ontario, this is, these are all of the single, all of the lower-tier cities that are, that are in the province that have populations over 100,000 people. So that makes up, believe it or not, about 80% of, 80% of all of the population in the province is in that group. The Regional Single Tiers of Ontario, which are the upper tiers or single-tier municipalities of 100,000 or more, so when we talk about upper tiers, those are the regional governments, mostly around Toronto. But single tiers within there, over 100,000, would be Kingston, or Sudbury, or Thunderbay, or Ottawa, as an example. And Eastern Ontario Wardens Caucus, so Eastern Ontario Wardens are the county heads, I believe there's 11 of them, they are from the, from Peterborough basically to the Quebec border. They are the upper-tier government heads that work on what I would say all of Eastern Ontario connectivity, trying to be more about us collectively. And because when you go to Toronto to talk to the provincial government or others about Kingston alone, it's tough when you're competing with the GTI, as an example, to get the ear of the ministers. So Eastern Ontario Wardens Caucus is an important partner, and the Eastern Ontario Mayor's Committee, which are the separated towns and cities within the, within Eastern Ontario, also have come together more in the last couple of years to be able to talk about the collective needs or issues that we are faced with. So the mayor's office and my office are connected to all of these groups, there's, it's not a huge assignment. Counselors have been connected, and Councillor George is, is, you have put his name forward for AMO. The mayor and past mayors have been involved in these. FCM, former councillor, was a representative for this area on FCM. So it's important that we stay engaged with these, and again, they don't take up a lot of time, but I wanted to give you a flavour for the integration and some of the work that we participate in. Moving on to Strategic Communications, so part of the approach that we took beginning in early 2014 was to really rethink our communications, how we were going to communicate and market and support the various services here in the city, line-up messaging, more use of social media, perhaps less use of newspaper advertising, trying to figure out how to engage people. We did some virtual town halls when we were talking about some input for the North Block. We're going to be talking about surveys and those sorts of things, we're going to be talking about the linkage of technology and how we might be able to use apps to help with different information. The days are really gone when you have a public meeting and it's in one building, and you have four people out or eight people out, and you expect that those people are the people that are giving you the advice on the topic you're trying to get advice on, and unfortunately, you know, we have to be able to respond and connect with the community. So that's the vision of where we're going. You know, we do have some success in pilots already, Dave Johnson, who you'll hear about Technology, his group, and GIS, in his GIS group are working in a number of different applications. So one of the applications that engineering has as an example is you can go on to the website, select a particular location, and that map will show you what's going on with respect to road or infrastructure-type projects in that particular area. So that's an indication of the types of things that we need to start bringing forward. A few years ago, we did use newspaper inserts, and we had something called Your City Working For You, and many departments actually fed information into that. That was a very useful document, we know the positive comments that we got from many of you here. And unfortunately, a couple of years ago, because of some additional costs related to that, we kind of went away from it, thinking we would have been more in the electronic age a little sooner. So that's what's before us, and some of you I know have talked to me about that, and we're certainly, we certainly want to go in that direction. The question becomes whether or not we have the infrastructure, the policies, and the applications that we can go fast on that. So we do, we will be communicating with the Administrative Policies Committee to try to set some policies and practices around that, so it will put parameters around the way we do this, because it really is new to us, but we know it's something that we want to do. I want to talk a little bit about the call centre. So at orientation, we asked that many times when you get complaints, don't, if you could, don't send them to directors or commissioners, we're always happy to take them, don't mean to be negative about that, but if you can get it to the call centre, it'll happen a lot faster to you or for you. So we take about 200,000 calls at the call centre. About 100,000 or 110,000 of those are for utilities Kingston-related, water, sewer, gas, electric, all of those sorts of things. And other departments that we serve are parks and transit and parking and those, we don't serve all the departments, but we're getting around to doing that. We, our average call length of time is 38 seconds, and our closure rate on work orders that are generated from every call that comes in, our closure rate is 96%. So if you have a, we were just talking with Councillor Bohm a few minutes ago, he had a situation where he tried the call centre instead of phoning around to see who could help him. He sent it to the call centre, and within, within a couple of hours, the issue had already been resolved, and he'd already got a notification back that it had been resolved. The good thing for us is that that goes into a system for tracking, and we're going to then mine that data and use that in order to look for service efficiencies and service improvements. I talked to you the first night that we showed you that net expenditure gap, and we said that, you know, if you had, if you set a tax rate at your strategic planning session at, say, 2.5%, we know next year, we know right now that we're looking for $1 million or something of that sort. We can tell you right now that we don't need you to tell us to find that, we're already working on finding that kind of money. So that's the level of ownership and commitment that we bring to the table to find ways, to find solutions, and stay providing services without impacting frontline services to the best of our ability. So those are just the few of the things I want to talk about communications. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kennedy.
So I was going to ask for chairs ruling on whether or not Gerard's time got added to mine or not, but since he's already pulled me out of the competition, I guess that's not an important point anymore. So I'm just going to briefly talk about the last two departments before I get going. For those of you that, and I think probably most of you have met, our Chief Information Officer, Dave Johnson, so all things technical at the city, just don't even worry about coming through me, just go straight to Dave. And Steve Dickey is our Director of Financial Services, and he is also the city's Deputy Treasurer. So in terms of information systems and technology for 2015, you'll see we have a, the budget's going up just under 5%. The main reason for this, actually, really the only reason for this, is a challenge that we have with our software and equipment maintenance support type agreements. And we have an increase of about $150,000 in those categories alone. So we've been able to absorb any other increases in the other accounts, including our salaries and benefits in other areas, but this continues to be a challenge. And certainly, as we increase and enhance our technology and the types of programs and software that we use, while we're seeing a lot of efficiencies and value for money in that investment, the other side of it, of course, is that we've got to maintain them and upgrade them and have the support services on them. So that's the main thing that's driving that. The, in terms of just some of our priorities going forward, so the first one I put on here is support to the corporate system implementations. We have some fairly large projects that are underway, and it's going to be a very busy, very busy year for ISNT because they support us on these. So normally, we have a department, and you have heard about the land management system from Commissioner Hurdle, where the department is the sponsor of the system, but we look to a lot of support from ISNT in terms of the implementation of these systems. So we've got certainly the financial management system, which you've heard about, and approved the purchase in December at the council meeting, the land management system, which you've heard about, and we will be looking into the future years, the customer relationship management technology upgrade, and that will help to support some of what Gerard was talking about with the call centre, and how we manage that data and how we use that data going forward. We'll also begin to start looking at the multi-year strategies for some of our information management, and looking at strategies leveraging some of emerging technologies that are happening for how we maintain and how we update and how we manage all our information across the corporation. And then the last one I put in here is probably, to me, one of the most important ones, it probably should have been at the top, in terms of the role of ISNT, is to continue to provide leadership in the evaluation and prioritization of our technology investment. So we have, just to give you a bit of a flavour, we probably have about 100 projects on the books at any one time, technology projects, that some are corporate projects in addition to the large corporate systems, just in terms of maintaining our infrastructure, but the majority of them are business support-type. But the majority of them are business support type ones. So you can imagine with 20-some departments, they all have different technology needs. There's emerging technology. And one of the roles that, that Dave plays and his department plays in terms is helping us in terms of evaluating and prioritizing what should be happening first. We don't have enough dollars and we don't have enough people to do all the, the wish lists. And so it's a matter of prioritizing and ensuring that, that we're putting our money at the right place in terms of technology. Financial services is going up just under 2%. We've, a couple of things that are in that budget in terms of the detail. We do have some increased revenues. You heard last night from KEDCO that they have transferred their accounting services over to the city. And so we are underway with that. This will be the first full year that we're providing them with those services. And we do charge them a revenue, just a cost recovery in terms of our staff time, not as much in terms of, so that it's revenue for the city, but that we're getting the cost of that service into the economic development operations so that we know exactly what KEDCO's costs are. There needs to be something in there earmarked in terms of what the, for what that service is. We've also had some additional tax roll and tax certificate revenues the last couple of years, and so we've bumped the budget up just to, to recognize some of that actual activity. In terms of financial services going forward, certainly the new financial management system implementation is probably the biggest thing this year in terms of the, the finance department. They are the sponsors of this system and will be very involved and a number of the staff will be pulled off and put full time on to the system implementation to ensure its success. I have talked about it briefly in, in the opening the other night, but we're pretty excited about this project. I think it's going to be one of those initiatives that's going to help us in terms of not only doing things like getting rid of some of our manual records and our manual processes, but it's going to lend itself towards better integration of systems, having one source of data rather than three sources for the same data and, and a number of things like that. So along with this implementation, we will be looking at our processes, standardizing some of our processes. One of the main ones that, that will be affected is our purchasing process. So right now we have a very manual process for purchasing. That will all be automated on the new system and people will be doing all the purchasing in terms of the approvals and, and filling out the purchase orders and everything will all be done through the system. So it will actually help us in terms of ensuring that we've got the right controls in place because the system will only let you do what you're allowed to do as far as, as purchasing goes. I have included long-term capital planning models. A lot of this work has been done and that's what's in your binders for this budget session. But certainly going forward, we have some more work to do subsequent to the strategic planning sessions, as well as some of our asset management planning that's ongoing. And as new information becomes available, we're continually updating those models. We've, I've also included expanded assessment role management and growth analysis. We have about, our assessment role is about $16 billion. It's a huge job to maintain and manage that role and a very important job in ensuring that we're getting accurate assessment and timely assessment on the role. So particularly new assessment coming on, that it's getting on the role on a timely basis. And our taxation department works very hard with that, but we're also looking at some changes with that as the land management system comes on track. So a future phase of the land management system, as you heard, will be moving into the building department. And as soon as you tell me a building permits issued, I think assessment, because that's the start of what's eventually going to hit the assessment role. So we've already been working with the planning and building department to ensure as they kind of move through that phase of the system, we'll be working with them to ensure that it, it not only stops there, but it makes its way right through the taxation department. So we'll have a much better handle on what's happening upfront. That will certainly help us in terms of projecting future growth. And finally, I've just put on a review of the effectiveness of financial processes and internal controls and compliance with the corporate financial policies. So this is our internal audit process that we do within the finance department and that's something that certainly is ongoing each year in terms of ensuring that we, we are, we've got the right internal controls in place and that the processes are being carried out accordingly. In terms of the capital budget, all our capital is under the ISNT and you'll see the capital budget request for $3.9 million. I've broke this down just into three categories for you. The, the technology lifecycle and sustainment. So that's just replacing the desktops and the laptops and, and the, the technology that you were provided on the, the first night of orientation. We normally spend about $2 million a year on that, just to maintain our, our networks and our systems. We're at about one and a half million because we do have some sitting in WIP that hasn't been used yet. So we were able to, for our 15 requests, drop that down a bit to use up some of the works in progress. The second component, which is about another one and a half million in the 2015 budget, is our enterprise business solutions. And the main one there, of course, is the phase two of the, the financial management system, which will include project costing and budgeting. So within the next year or maybe two years, I won't promise next year because that's coming up pretty soon, but certainly the subsequent budget, you probably will see something different because we'll certainly be using the, the system to do that. And then finally, the last 900,000 or so is our remaining budget is the strategic ISNT projects. So that's some of the other 100 projects that are, that are on the list and, and they vary from year to year. So just a couple more slides. We've covered off, if you go back to the, the summary that, that Gerard started with the first night, that was by department and showed the four years. We've worked our way down in order through that summary. There's one more line on there that I had touched on the first night, but just to, to revisit, is the capital levy, our fiscal services and our tax adjustments. So these are kind of the corporate accounts that don't fall into any specific department and you'll see them at the bottom of the, of the municipal summary. The budget's about $30 million. The main thing that's in here is our 1% capital levy, which we've talked about, which is just under $28 million. The Municipal Property Assessment Corporation assessment services are in there. We pay about $1.7 million a year to MPAC to manage the, the assessment for us. We also have our operating fund investment income sits within these accounts and we have that budgeted at about $1.3 million, which is about $200,000 higher than last year's budget. So that has certainly helped our 15 budget. That sounded great two days ago until the announcement on the overnight bank rate. So we'll see what happens there and that's definitely one of the ones we'll be watching. And then in terms of tax adjustments in that category, we do have our penalty and interest income on our outstanding taxes, which is about $1.7 million. And the remaining amount within those accounts relates to our tax write-offs and tax adjustments of about $4.1 million. And that includes a couple of things in there. One is our brownfields community improvement plan, which was, was already mentioned tonight. So that's where we are paying back for some of the brownfields costs to, to eligible developers, as well as any of our DC impost exemptions, where we then are paying those back into the reserve funds to keep those, those reserve funds whole. So that's all, all falls within the tax adjustment accounts. That's it.
Okay, thank you very much. Any questions? Councillor Hutchinson.
Just on the last bit there, you said 2.7 million for tax write-offs and tax assistance. How does that break out for those two elements? Please.
Can you pull that out, Steve? Have you got that in the, is that in the binder? The tax, the allowance for tax write-offs and tax assistance programs?
Through you, your worship. From memory, approximately 1 million is we provide each year for, just for allowance for bad debts, for write-offs, for, for properties that typically go to tax sale. Approximately 1 million of that is, is the brownfield adjustments that Desiree referred to.
So I didn't hear the first number.
Going from memory, the tax write-off typically around a million dollars a year is for tax write-offs, typically for accounts that go to tax sale, where we, we carry, we have to carry the taxes and charge interest on them, but we, we eventually have to make provision for bad debts for those accounts.
Okay. Where do programs for seniors and that sort of thing fit in there?
That's within that category.
And how much, do we know how much that is?
We can look it up for you. I don't have that exact amount. The vacancy rebates are in there, the seniors, any of those tax assistance programs are within that category. I'm, I'm guessing maybe around 200 or 300,000 dollars, Steve. It might be, actually no, it's probably more than that with the vacancy rebate. It's probably closer to 800 or 900,000 dollars in that category, but we can pull that exact number. And then the allowance for tax write-offs is our, any of the ones, particularly our brownfield type ones or properties that have gone for tax sale and have not sold. So we continue to charge the taxes through the tax revenue and then we have to, to turn around and write them off. We also have some properties that are under appeal. So MPAC has been historically quite far behind in terms of managing the appeal process going through them. And so we will set up an allowance basically for where we think some of the assessment appeal, where they're, where the property owners are going to win and we're going to lose some of that. So that also is set up as, as part of our allowance. So we try to stay a step ahead of that.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Councillor Stroth.
Thank you, your worship. Could you give a little bit more detail, please, on the, the capital tax levy? It said an increase of 8%. I know you touched on it, but I still don't have, haven't wrapped my head around how that happened and how that compares to other years.
Sure. So the capital tax levy is a 1% dedicated tax increase. So it's 1% of our total tax revenue, which is about 2 million dollars. And so that continues to accumulate each year. It's accumulated up to just about under 28 million dollars now. So it's been going for 12, 13 years, I think now. And we continue to show it for another 10 years in our capital model. So that revenue comes in and goes right to our capital reserve funds. And then that helps to fund our capital, capital projects and our debt charges.
No, I understand what it is, but how does it, how does the, where does the 8% specific increase, year-over-year increase come from?
It's, it's just because it's taking, it's actually about 2 million dollars. So it's a 1% of our total tax revenue, but if you're looking just last year's line to this year's line, then it's about 8%.
Wouldn't that indicate an 8% growth rate somehow?
No, because you're, it's only a percentage of the previous year's capital levy amount. So it is eight, it's an 8% increase of last year's capital levy and it's 1% of the larger tax revenue pool.
Okay, I, I didn't quite understand what the 1% exactly meant. Okay, now I understand. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Allen.
Thank you, through you, your worship. Just a few questions about, well, first, we, over the course of the last three days, we've had a lot of presentations about a lot of software implementation in many divisions and departments, probably some of your 100 projects. And I'm wondering about the integration between some of these where it makes sense. Are we, have we looked at integrating for across divisions and communication and sharing of information across divisions? It would just, it seems to me like we're investing a lot in software in, for various different reasons and I would like to make sure that they, they can share information between each other.
Through you, Mr Mayor. Commissioner Kennedy referred to our prior resetting exercise and the governance model that we've, we've put in place. And one of the components of that, which is critical to that process is when we look at the technology requirements that the department's requesting or being, or identifying, we start to look around and, and say, okay, what do we already have that can meet that particular need? We typically do a fit gap analysis and if there's a good fit or reasonably good fit, then we'll expand that particular solution by additional licenses and deploy it in that particular business area. If there's not a good fit, then we'll typically go out and do a procurement to look for that solution. It's definitely our strategy to do, to consolidate and do, look for larger, fewer systems. We have put in place some, what I would, I'm trying to stay away from technical stuff, but it's called middleware and it's an integration software that allows us to actually move data back and forth between different applications, much easier than we can do it before.
Thank you. I understand the need for very specific software for some very specific jobs, but sometimes that data that's created by that software is useful in other departments. And it, it always sounds, based on a lot of the presentations, that we have a great start to cross-silo communication in, in the organization and that's fantastic. I wanted to ask if there's room, so we've heard a little bit about our cost recoveries with the financial services. Is there room in our capacity to grow that, especially when we bring on the new financial management software? Or is there sort of going to be a, a ceiling on that at some point?
I would say today, there's not a lot of capacity left without bringing some, some more staff on, but I think over the next couple of years, if we get the new financial management system in place and we get a better understanding of what that's going to mean, I could see potentially some capacity. We've been through a couple of these now, since I've been here, in terms of bringing on the downtown business improvement area and KEDCO. And it's something that, it, it takes quite a bit of analysis at, at the start to make sure that it's the right fit for both organizations. And certainly for our agencies, it tends to be the right fit because they have the same accounting policies and accounting standards that we do. But it's something too, in terms of what type of reporting they need and, and is it going to be, you know, are they actually going to be able to see a savings in terms of staffing or whatever at their end as well? And that's not always, always possible. But I would say certainly, jury's out, we'll wait and see when we get the new system in place, there may be some potential there.
CEO Hunt, do you want to add something?
Could I just make a point for council members as well, when you're thinking about those sorts of things? So we don't run separate systems for those other departments to run together. So as an example, when invoices are paid for the Downtown Business Association now, KEDCO, and all the city departments and utilities Kingston, which we do accounts payable processing for, that goes out, back out to the suppliers in one check. And so what's important there is that you, they know that those organizations are connected to the city, but if you got into a situation where you're trying to provide service to an organization that didn't fit with our accounting practices or policies in terms of municipal government and those agency-related, then it would not only be very difficult to do it as a consolidated system, but it would be completely confusing to people we deal with because they wouldn't, they wouldn't understand how to process the payments when they got there.
Thank you. And one more question for, or CEO Hunt, when it comes to our call centre, you shared some great information about how quick our calls are and how we close most of those calls. Do you know what the average speed of closure is for those calls? Is it 24 hours, 72 hours a week, where that might fit in?
I'm sorry, I don't actually have that information, Colleen. Would you know that, I found?
Through you, your worship. There are service standards set for different types of calls. So sometimes it could be a few hours, in other cases it might be a couple of days. We can get you that information though, because those standards are clearly set out.
Thank you, Colleen. And just a follow, quick follow-up question in terms of when we're doing our engagement and our, our call centre data collection, how much do our other divisions have access to information? Will that come, I guess, as we evolve the CRM system? Is that what we're looking at? I just, I'm interested in making sure that we have efficient sharing across the board and that people have access to it, who should have access to it.
If you can just, just put the mic back on. There you go.
There we go, sorry. Usually I'm loud enough to be heard over almost anything. So in terms of the information that we currently So in terms of the information that we currently have, we're not waiting for a new CRM system to start sharing that information. The information is shared with departments. What we need to do a better job of is helping, helping our own staff, so the communications staff, understand how we can use it, for example. So if we can better utilize the information to analyze what kind of questions are coming in, then we understand what kind of information the public's looking for, and then can do a better job of getting that information out. So that's one example of how we can better use that. But we're not waiting for the new system. That's something that we're going to start working on right away.
Great, thank you. And one more question for you, Colleen. We're doing a great job ramping up our engagement. We're trying things, the virtual town halls. How are we demonstrating that engagement or tracking that engagement so that we can understand who's connecting with us? And are we, I guess it's two questions, sorry. And are we planning to ensure that our engagement is participatory? So we're creating more options for, when we're seeking solutions, we're going to our communities, which are our strength for those solutions?
Thank you, through you, Your Worship. So we have a number of things planned. You'll notice in the budget book that we're looking at a thorough review of communications over the next, this year and next, although we are making improvements as we go. One of the things that we're going, you'll be seeing coming out, I hope within the next month, will be a survey going out to the residents of Kingston to gauge how well we're doing in communication, that we, and so that we can use that as a benchmark to be able to measure year-over-year. We're also going to be better building in evaluation measures in all of the communication planning that we do. So what we hope to get from that data is how best to engage, rather than simply relying on, you know, one-way messaging out. So that's what we hope to get from that, and that's where we'll be building from there.
Thank you very much. Counselor Osannick.
Thank you, Your Worship. One question about the call center. And I just wondered, so when the originator opens the ticket, whether it's a member of the public or a counselor, are they always supposed to get, then, another email when the ticket has closed and it's been resolved? Like every time? And is that a new feature?
Through you, Your Worship. I know that they do get a ticket for it to close, but I don't know the technology of how that happens, because that's how they monitor how well they're doing and whether they're meeting those service standards.
Oh, I see. So it's not the end user who gets the email when it's been resolved? It's internal staff? When it's been closed? So a pothole, for example? When that pothole's been fixed? If I was the originator, am I supposed to get a ticket, you know, four weeks later saying, now the pothole has been fixed?
That's a really excellent question, and I'm not sure of the answer, but I can find that out for you.
CEO Hunt.
So yes, Mr. Mayor, there is a closure email that goes back to the individual that originates the call or originates the contact. And we'll provide more information in the council update in the next couple of weeks on that, so that we can inform you, and you can then assess the effectiveness of it to assist you with some of the, some of the feedback that you get.
Okay, seeing no other questions, thank you very much. Okay, so that brings us to the end of our presentations. So at this point, we will move into deliberations and approval of municipal operating and capital budgets. So just before, before we do that, Mr. Clerk, are we ready with those amendments for pecuniary interest? Or should we do those later? Mr. Clerk, can I, can I see you for a second? Okay. So, so the way we're going to proceed here is I'm going to ask for a mover and seconder to move the budget, noting that staff are just going to make a couple of amendments related to the disclosures of pecuniary interest that have been made by members of council. So we're just making those adjustments to the budget proposal that we have before us. Can I have a mover? Moved by Counselor George, seconded by Counselor Osannick. So, point of order.
Before we approve the budget, can we debate some of the issues?
So this is just moving it and seconding it to put it on the floor so that we can then allow for amendments. So we're not calling the vote, but before you can amend the budget, we need to put it on the floor. So that's all we're doing at this point. So it's been moved by Counselor George, seconded by Counselor Osannick. So now the budget is on the floor. So now we can entertain, Counselor George?
Thank you, Your Worship. I was just asking as a courtesy if anyone is putting an amendment on the floor, if they could let us know what section and page they're on, so we can all participate and know exactly where there's, what they're speaking to.
So, so what I asked last night is that any amendments are in writing, so that we can make sure that we get everything up on the screen and everyone knows exactly what it is that we're talking about. So at this point, I will entertain any motions to amend the budget. Is there anybody that wishes for, to put forward a motion to amend? Counselor McLaren?
Thank you. I have given an edited copy to the clerks. Did you want me to read it, or did you?
You can read it, and then we're going to wait, we're going to wait for it to be put up on the screen. Okay, so, so the motion that has been put forward is about half a page, so it's going to take a bit of time to get this ready. What I'm going to ask is if anybody else has a motion to amend in writing, please give it to the clerk now, and we will call a recess, and then we can come back. We'll give staff the time to be able to work out page details, so we all understand where we're at. So if there's anybody else that has a motion to amend, can you give it to the clerk now? And we will call, Mr. Clerk, 10-minute, 10-minute recess? Depends on the number. Are there any other amendments to come forward? Now, this isn't formally putting it forward, this is just submitting it to the clerk, and then we can deal with it later. Mr. Clerk, can you? That's great. Any others? Going once? Going twice? Okay, it's old. Okay, so... Mr. Clerk, can you advise on the recommended time for our motion of recess?
Your Worship, 10 minutes should be fine.
Okay, so we'll call a 10-minute recess.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, we will reconvene. If I can get everybody to grab their seats. Okay, so, so councillor McLaren has put forward a motion to amend. So councillor McLaren, you have the floor. If you'd like to, if you'd like to read the motion, and then you can speak to it.
This is a motion to provide interim funding for Don House. Whereas Don House provides shelter and help for some of the most vulnerable women and children in the city. And whereas Don House has been operating at capacity, which is indicative of a dire need in our community. And whereas Don House's funding is expected to run out on June 30th, 2015. And whereas Don House's funding will run out due in part to miscommunication, misunderstandings on the city's RFP process. Therefore be it resolved that funding totaling 150,455 be provided to Don House Women's Shelter. In the interim to remain open in 2015 until staff reports back by March 2015 with possible options to keep Don House open beyond 2015. The funding for which to be accessed from the Working Fund Reserve and/or the Local Service Realignment Reserve Fund, or any fund staff thinks appropriate.
Councillor McLaren, just before you go any further, can I just get that, can I get the motion on my screen?
Oh, sorry, Q3, my mistake, not March, Q3.
Councillor McLaren, you have the floor, so you can speak to it.
Don House is a unique shelter in size. It has 10 beds, whereas its replacement has only six. It's working at capacity right now, which means that if it closes, we will be leaving behind at least four people, or families with children. It, it is a different model than the one that is predominant in our city today. And as such, I believe that it needs to be fit in to the plan for homelessness. And by closing it, we are exacerbating the problem. The time to close a shelter is only when it's not needed anymore. It's working, Don House is working at full capacity, and as such, this is definitely not the time for it to be closing. In that case, since it's not the time to be closing, I would very much like to keep it going for the rest of the year. And to ask staff to find ways to make it fit into our plan, into our homelessness and affordable housing plan. Sorry, not affordable housing plan, into our homelessness plan. Because we need it. There are people who are very vulnerable and desperate for this. It is a, it is a particular shelter that specializes in battered women who are not initially homeless, but are in a very difficult situation at home, and may need to be relocated quickly. And this is not something that are, the central goal of our homelessness plan. These are women that need to be taken out of abusive relationships or dangerous relationships. As such, when we close this shelter, we will be putting more people in our community at risk of harm or death. This is not a way for a civilized society to look after the most vulnerable in our midst. And I ask you to please, let's keep Don House open, and let's do what we can. And I ask staff to come up with the best possible proposals to keep Don House open. And I reserve the right to speak last.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, we will reconvene. If I can get everybody to grab their seats. Okay, so, so councillor McLaren has put forward a motion to amend. It is seconded by councillor Holland. So councillor McLaren, you have the floor, so you can speak to it.
This is a motion to provide interim funding for Don House. Whereas Don House provides shelter and help for some of the most vulnerable women and children in the city. And whereas Don House has been operating at capacity, which is indicative of a dire need in our community. And whereas Don House's funding is expected to run out on June 30th, 2015. And whereas Don House's funding will run out due in part to miscommunication, misunderstandings on the city's RFP process. Therefore be it resolved that funding totaling 150,455 be provided to Don House Women's Shelter. In the interim to remain open in 2015 until staff reports back by March 2015 with possible options to keep Don House open beyond 2015. The funding for which to be accessed from the Working Fund Reserve and/or the Local Service Realignment Reserve Fund, or any fund staff thinks appropriate.
Councillor McLaren, just before you go any further, can I just get that, can I get the motion on my screen?
Oh, sorry, Q3, my mistake, not March, Q3.
That's great, thank you. Councillor McLaren, you have the floor, so you can speak to it.
Don House is a unique shelter in size. It has 10 beds, whereas its replacement has only six. It's working at capacity right now, which means that if it closes, we will be leaving behind at least four people, or families with children. It, it is a different model than the one that is predominant in our city today. And as such, I believe that it needs to be fit in to the plan for homelessness. And by closing it, we are exacerbating the problem. The time to close a shelter is only when it's not needed anymore. It's working, Don House is working at full capacity, and as such, this is definitely not the time for it to be closing. In that case, since it's not the time to be closing, I would very much like to keep it going for the rest of the year. And to ask staff to find ways to make it fit into our plan, into our homelessness and affordable housing plan. Sorry, not affordable housing plan, into our homelessness plan. Because we need it. There are people who are very vulnerable and desperate for this. It is a, it is a particular shelter that specializes in battered women who are not initially homeless, but are in a very difficult situation at home, and may need to be relocated quickly. And this is not something that are, the central goal of our homelessness plan. These are women that need to be taken out of abusive relationships or dangerous relationships. As such, when we close this shelter, we will be putting more people in our community at risk of harm or death. This is not a way for a civilized society to look after the most vulnerable in our midst. And I ask you to please, let's keep Don House open, and let's do what we can. And I ask staff to come up with the best possible proposals to keep Don House open. And I reserve the right to speak last.
Is there anybody that wishes to speak to the motion?
Thank you, your worship. Just to point out that Kingston is unique in the, in the makeup of its homeless population, which many who've been involved in the Homelessness, Housing and Homelessness Committee would know. We have, the majority of the homeless population in Kingston are women. This is in contrast to other, other municipalities. And we have done, despite that fact, we in Kingston have done a, a very good job of housing women who are, who require shelter. Looking at the report from Community Services from February 13th, 2014, it indicates that, that on the night of the homeless count that was conducted, a higher proportion of women than men were sheltered. Ninety-four percent of women were sheltered on the night of the count versus eighty-three percent of men. So despite the fact that the numbers are disproportionately high for women who require shelter, they, they found that shelter. So I'm, I'm using this as an example because at this time, Don House was operational. It seems like it's filling a very important role at the moment. And I think, you know, we have a wonderful plan in place to put an end to homelessness in the city. It hasn't been entirely implemented yet, and so the, the overall point here is that there's a need, and it should be, Don House should receive the funds required to continue to operate.
Councillor Hatchison, I saw your hand next.
Thank you, your worship. I think, I'm gonna be rather brutal here. The, Don House fell upon difficult times for a number of years, off and on. into housing with support services, not to get them and leave them in shelters where they, a lot of them often will stay there for a period of time. So with that in mind, obviously, more funding was put towards a housing-first and trying to find ways to provide those support services. I, I will say that through the RFP process, the committee, actually, the advisory committee, did pass a motion which was then approved by council to make sure that, and I will read it to you. The direction was that we reconsider the mix of shelters being requested in the RFP process with the view to include a shelter space that aids women in crisis. In the RFP, we had a question which indicated, "How would the agency provide segregated, female-only sleeping accommodation and where required service by female staff to accommodate the needs of women who feel threatened, unsafe, or fearful in the presence of men?" We did get two responses. One was Elizabeth Frye, the other one, Homebase Housing. We evaluated them and made a recommendation that Elizabeth Frye provide the service actually for women, vulnerable women, as we were directed in the RFI and in the RFP, which council approved. I do have to say that a number of agencies applied through this process. A number of agencies were not successful and did not receive funding. So definitely from a staff's perspective, we, and I'm sure we will hear from those agencies in terms of the integrity of the process and, and the application process. I also want to note, and I agree, that the transitioning is important. I, I want to inform council that we currently fund seventy-four beds today with Don House operational. As of July 2015, with Don House, if they choose to close, because we do not have the authority to make Don House close. They are a separate organization. They are not a city service. If Don House decided to close as July 15, we would have eighty-four beds that we would be funding in the community. So we're actually increasing our number of beds without Don House. We're adding ten more beds that we're funding. If you add Don House to that, we're at ninety-six bed that we're funding. So it's somewhat contradictory to the housing-first model where we're trying to get people in housing with support services and not in shelters. But I, I wanted to make sure that council was aware that we're actually increasing our number of beds as of July 1st, 2015.
Thank you. One other question in the motion makes reference to miscommunication related to the RFP process. Are staff aware of any miscommunication that might have happened with Don House?
Mr. Mayor, we contacted all agencies and made them aware of this process. We had meetings with a number of agencies. We obviously met and worked with some of them that were not successful through the process. Rhindale is an example. So we have been very cooperative and worked with any agency that has come forward. We even worked with Gathering Place, who wasn't eligible to apply for this particular program. So we have been very open in terms of our communication.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Neil, will you take the chair?
I will, and I recognize you.
Thank you. I certainly, I appreciate the sentiment of the motion that's come forward. The concern that I have is, as we've heard from staff, that we have a competitive model for a certain amount of funding, and a number of shelters put proposals forward, and some of those shelters got funding and some of those shelters didn't. If council overrides that and awards unilaterally some funding to one agency, in my view, that is not fair to all of the other shelters that went through that process, including the ones that we said no to. It would be one thing if the motion said, "We want more money to, for an additional proposal for more shelter beds for women in crisis." But this is talking about giving money to one agency outside of the process that we've already set up. And I think because of that, we have to be very, very careful. Because I'm, if I was running any one of those other shelters, I would be knocking on council's door tomorrow saying, "Hold on, I played by the rules, and we didn't get funding, so how is it that somebody else is getting preferential treatment?" That's not, that's not a slight, it's not a knock against Don House, but I think it's very important that we have a level playing field. So for that reason, I'm not going to support this motion, and I would advise council not to. The better approach, so vote this down, and then in the weeks to come, if we want to have a discussion and we feel that we need more funding for, for general, for, for helping women in crisis, that would be the better way to go, and we can have that discussion. So I am going to ask council to vote against. Thanks very much.
And I return the chair.
Thank you. I saw councillor Bohm and then councillor Shell. Councillor Bohm.
Thank you, your worship, and through you. So the question relating to, I guess, the transition. I understand that we have more beds coming available. I guess my concern would be, are those beds available at this time? Or would Don House be closing, and then ten people would kind of have nowhere to go? And then, I mean, I'm looking at it as a transitional proposal where there'd be that bridging of funding. And, I mean, I don't know, I'd speak for myself when I say I'd have a very hard time supporting something where ten people are going out on the street because there's not ten beds available for them to go to. So if those beds are available now and would replace the unique service that Don House actually provides, then I could see with the withdrawal of the motion, realizing that the services are there now.
So Commissioner Hurdle, can you answer that?
Through, Mr. Mayor, yes. We recognize that there was going to be a transition period, and that's why all the agencies that were receiving funding previously have been extended to July 2015. So Don House will continue to operate until July 2015. In the meantime, all other agencies that are providing services that where currently the, the clients of Don House could go to. So there are two, two shelters specifically. One is Elizabeth Frye, which will be providing six to eight beds for women, specifically vulnerable women. And then we also have Lily's Place, operated by Homebase Housing, who provides families. So often you'll have women with children, so they can go to Lily's Place. Lily's Place is already operational. And Elizabeth Frye is already an operational organization, and their, their six to eight beds will be ready and available by July 2015.
And, sorry, just to follow that, will the people that are currently at Don House then be transitioned there? Or would this be kind of, just they'd go back into the pool of, of available beds and could kind of, I guess, end up in the cold?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. People would be referred, and that's something else that through this, this new program or plan, there is a system that's being put in place so that people can be referred. If a shelter is full, that information is available, and then that individual can be referred to another shelter that may have space.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next on my list is councillor Shell.
Thank you, Mayor Patterson. Yes, I've, I've been on the Housing and Homelessness Committee for a couple of years, and we did go during the time of the Housing and Homelessness ten-year, Homelessness Ten-Year Plan. And there were huge discussions along all of these lines. And I think one of the things councillor Bohm said that really helped remind me was, the whole focus is that women and men will not keep coming to a shelter. That it, we won't be saying someone's going to spend four weeks or six weeks, night after night, at a shelter. We're going to find homes for them, plus the social services to help keep them in a, a home, especially for people who haven't, it's the most acute that we'd like to try and help first. And that there would actually be social assistance for these people in terms of a social worker, a crisis counselor, things that we haven't had. We've had a shelter system that's just run for years and years with spotty help for people, very spotty housing. Women in particular have been much better in, in forming groups like Lily's Place and our major one. And it's just, I can only think of Nellie's Place in Toronto, our Interval House. So I've been very supportive of the whole homelessness plan that we've created. And I realize, I remember when Homebase Housing came to one of the meetings, many times they came, but the, the manager said, "We're all a bit scared of this, but we're excited because we now have a chance to actually change the way we've been doing it year after year after year, to find housing for people." And that's why we kept reallocating money and, because it's not a big pool, and we had to find ways that we could house people, give them the support they need to stay in housing, and try to over time reduce the number of shelter beds. So this isn't a sudden change that we're going to suddenly have no shelter beds. We've got them. We're going to, as we make sure that people are housed and can stay housed, we can slowly reduce that on what is quite a limited amount of money. That we, we just don't have piles of money for this. So I, I can't support this, but I certainly hope that during strategic planning, we can discuss it in, in detail. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on my list is councillor Neil.
Thank you. I'm, like, like councillor Shell, I too sit on the Housing and Homelessness Committee. And there were, through the, throughout the process, certain concerns, and many of them have been addressed. And I spoke some, some time ago to the mover about my reluctance to support this motion at the time because there was indeed an RFP process. They didn't, for whatever reason, they, they thought that the message they'd been given was that they were not likely to get it. But they didn't apply for the RFP. We do have a very different organization, Interval House, that does a tremendous job. They're totally provincially funded. They receive no funding from the city, with the sole exception that we gave them a one-time capital grant, I believe, and staff can correct me if I'm wrong, to help them to develop their transitional house that allows them to transition people. But there is a, a traditional working relationship between Don House and Interval House. And sometimes, women who haven't totally found their way to be on their feet again have had an opportunity. They have had an alternative. That was Don House. And I've expressed this concern, and we've heard this concern in delegation at Housing and Homelessness, that perhaps we were ending up with too few points of service provision. And let me explain that. If, right now, with Rhindale, which I totally support, and I understand we're seeking a way to, to extend their service as well, if somebody comes into homeless shelter, and we have to remember that often these are psychiatric survivors, often these are people with, with a troubled situation, that thus they are homeless. And when they come in, what's happened traditionally is if they suddenly find themselves with somebody in that particular home that they have issues with, and there might very well be some conflict as a result, they've been able, they've been able, Rhindale's been able to pick up the phone and phone Homebase Housing, and, and they've swapped a residence. They've said, you know, "I think, I think this is a powder keg. Would you mind?" And the original model didn't have as many service providers that would allow them to address that situation. My concern at Housing and Homeless, and the reason why I initially moved a motion to address the issue of women who felt vulnerable, was that originally, there was no recognition for single-gender homeless shelters. And the vision of some, of, for a lot of women, I thought, who felt themselves vulnerable, who, who were recovering from an abusive situation, to try and run a gauntlet, if you will, to get into a gender, a gender-mixed housing, a homeless shelter, I think would have meant that many of those women may have chosen to stay on the street. And sometimes the women also...
Thirty, thirty seconds.
Thank you. Sometimes those women also are in a situation where they have a child with them. We need, I think, before we totally abandon this, I think we have to be sure that housing first and rapid rehousing is working. And I think that's going to take some time. This motion allows us to see the, the inclusion of Don House funding just to the end of this year, and then we can...
Thank you.
Reassess it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Councillor George.
Thank you, your worship. I just find this extremely odd, especially coming from at least positive term from two previous councillors. When we had a report that came before the past council, councillor Shell alluded to that, and I appreciate the comments that you made as well as those of yourself, your worship. You know, we, we heard council in the past talk about the allocation of funds and the importance of having a report before council to justify doing that. We've had that report before the previous council, a decision was made, and we were moving forward based on that, and that's why the budget is structured as it is. In fact, ninety-nine percent of the budget is structured based on reports and recommendations that the previous council made to direct staff in presenting the budget that we have before us now. You know, I'm looking at this letter for the first time. In fact, it was brought to my attention by a member of the, the press. And I have no idea who the author of the letter is because they don't, I don't know what their, you know, association is with Don House. I did have an opportunity to, to speak with the commissioner, and I appreciate what she had to say in order to make everyone aware of the process, the policy that we currently have in place. And I think what we have done in the past, and the members of council from, from the previous council should be aware of this, that what we have in the past is, if we've had a concern with this, and in this case, Don House has everything in place according to what we've just heard till July 7, that if we have a reporting of some sort to council, then we could give some consideration at that time as to whether we wish to, to assist in some additional funding. But to bring forward a motion this evening based on what, the only evidence I have is one letter written by somebody whose association, I don't know whether they're on the board of directors or what their association is, is a bit of a knee-jerk reaction that we all have requests coming to us at all times. I'm sure today, a number of us did, based on some of the discussion we had and what we heard from external agencies last night. But in my view, this is not the time and the place to be dealing with this type of, of, of request. I may not have problems supporting it in the future if we have something that reports a little more information for us and obviously backtracks and gives the new members of council an opportunity to see how this whole process came about and why we're where we are today with our funding model and who we're funding and why. And so I won't be supporting this motion at this time. I, I just think it's an inappropriate time, your, your worship.
Thank you. Next on my list is councillor Senick.
Thank you, your worship. I voted for that report in September as well for homelessness. I remember someone asking around the horseshoe a question, "What about Don House?" And I believe the answer was, "Don House did not apply." And it's true, Don House did not apply. But what we've found out since last night is the reason why Don House did not apply. And I believe in applying for funding, you know, the arts funds, the cultural plan funds, everybody applies, the RFP process, everybody applies. And it works well as long as everything is clear. So what we've learned from Don House is that they did not think that they qualified because they do not offer a co-ed shelter service. They thought our RFP proposal were only for those services that apply, you know, that offer co-ed shelters. And, and for that confusion, like due to that technicality and their interpretation of the RFP... of the RFP, now Don House could close, and I think that's tragic, just due to that technicality. And, you know, we just heard that, um, staff met with Don House during the RFP process and, or, you know, maybe before the RFP. Like, I just don't understand how that miscommunication between the members of staff that supposedly met with Don House, um, why Don House then thought that they were going to be excluded from applying for this particular RFP, that it was only for those, um, agencies that gave coed services, or coed shelters. And, um, I just don't want to see Don House closed due to that technicality, because it definitely seems from their letter that they would have applied, you know, for the RFP, had they known that they did actually qualify, at least to apply and try to get the funding. It looks like Elizabeth Frye, they knew that they could, because they did apply, and they got, you know, the funding for that. They were successful, and it would have been nice to have seen Don House at least apply, and then let the RFP process fall out the way it is. But they didn't think that they qualified, and due to that technicality, now they could close their doors for good if they don't find an alternate source of funding by July.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that has not spoken that wishes to speak? Counsel Turner.
Hi. Sorry, I'll get this quick. So, let me understand this. I support, I definitely support Don House. I love, I think it's a great agency, and I think it should continue on, but I'm just a little concerned about the RFP process and how this all went about. And if you could just answer a couple questions. If we go on forward, if we continue on, we could possibly get them some more funding. Is that, is that correct?
Commissioner Hurdle.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. The, um, the RFP process that was actually completed is for a period of three years. So technically, any agencies that are, haven't been allocated funding through this RFP process after July 15th would not be receiving any funding from the city. Again, a number of those shelters do have other sources of funding, but they would not be receiving, uh, city funding.
But we could allocate funding possibly to them.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. The, the city council could decide to allocate funding to any agency that they wish to allocate funding to, for any amount that they wish to allocate money to.
At another time. It doesn't have to be decided this evening, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Well, in, in light of that information, I'm not going to support this motion on the floor tonight. Sorry.
Thank you. Counsel Camden.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, just a question for staff, uh, just for, uh, perfect clarification, is the, uh, did we have communication during the process with, with Don House? Uh, and was there any acknowledgement or response at any point? I'm sure if they knew about it, of, you know, for the sake of a phone call, they could have clarified, uh, a technicality. Was there any communication with the city and them during the process at all?
Commissioner Hurdle.
Through, through, Mr. Mayor, uh, yes, there was communication with Don House during the process. In terms of the details of those communication, uh, again, if this is something council would like us to report back on, I, I would be happy to do that, because, uh, it was mainly, uh, my team members that were involved in those communication. I personally was not directly involved, but I know that there was communication that did take place with agencies. I do want to point out that, um, Elizabeth Frye is not a coed agency. Elizabeth Frye services women, um, and, um, and, um, and girls only, so, um, it's not, uh, the issue here is not that the agencies that were applying had to be coed, because in that case, Elizabeth Frye would not have, uh, qualified, and would not have been awarded the funding for, um, uh, the shelter for vulnerable women.
Thank you. I, I think I just would like to make the comment that I, I'm not going to be supporting the motion, because I, I think it contradicts the protocol and procedure that, uh, Mayor Patterson, Patterson kind of alluded to, the, uh, and it, it also may contradict the direction that we're taking, uh, to solve housing, uh, home, or homelessness in the city. Um, I think that, uh, I think that those two, uh, points there are enough to discredit the motion.
Thank you. Seeing you know the speakers, Counsel McLaren, you have the floor.
Thank you. It's been mentioned that, uh, we're talking about segregated new beds, and that may be true, but part of what Don House offers is family, as in women and children, which may not fit nicely in many of these other shelters, even if they are segregated. There are common entrances, there are common rooms, which make these particular women nervous, at the very least. Adding beds, it's been argued that adding beds, uh, is not, sorry. Adding beds is not sufficient. It may be sufficient for a particular privileged case of the stereotypical homeless person, but what we are needing is units, often described as beds, which have places for women and their children. When we add beds and only count the beds, we are not considering the, the special cases that come from this particular, um, home, uh, this particular shelter. This is also, it's been argued that this is operational funding. It is not. I'm not asking for next year or the year after that. I'm asking for one time to keep it open long enough so that we can get a report on the best way to proceed, the best way to have the dominant case, the housing-first model, implemented in the most effective humane way possible. It's been argued that this was a competitive model, that some made it and some did not, and that it would not be fair for those who did not. This again is based on a privileged case of an ideal homeless person that may or may not exist, or may exist only as an average. We are dealing here with a very special case, and I ask you to temper your rationality with a little bit of mercy, because if you don't have that, all of this is for nothing. This is a different model than the dominant housing-first model. It doesn't mean that it has to be contrary to the existing model. It can be supplementary. It can take up the loose ends, the parts of the model that are missed in the privileged case. It has been argued that perhaps later is a better time to do this. It may be better later to find the full solution, and that is why we're asking for the report. That's why this motion is asking for a report from council, and it'd be better to do it now, because this is budget time. Later, the budget is set, whereas right now, we're dealing with money. We're asking for a one-time contribution to this cause, and we're asking for a solution going forward into the future. This is not a permanent solution yet. A solution is in the future. Please consider keeping it for now, until we can find that solution. And I suggest now, because this is when we talk about money. Elizabeth Frye is not the same as Don House. Elizabeth Frye is based on people coming back into society from the prison system. These people who are serviced by Don House are in society, they are in abusive relationships, they are survivors of trauma or, uh, mental illness. These people are not, they do not have the same needs as someone coming back to be reintegrated into society. Elizabeth Frye is the same, is a, is the next step after a halfway house. This is not the best place to put women and children who are at risk. People would be, um... It has been argued that, uh, we should be finding homes for people. May I remind you, this is a special case. We're looking at people who are being moved from, from an existing home temporarily into a shelter. A shelter is a type of service that is provided to vulnerable people.
Thirty seconds.
And so we are going to find homes for them, but this is it, and it's not the same as Interval House. Interval House does not consider themselves a shelter. So I'm asking you to please reconsider. Show some mercy to the people who are less fortunate than us, because if we don't act with love, we have nothing at all. Thank you.
Thank you.
So with that, we will call the vote. Please vote now. And that carries by a vote of seven to six. Moving on to the Second Amendment, I believe that was Counsel Hutchinson. Counsel Hutchinson, did you, did you submit an amendment as well?
But, on a point of order?
Yes.
If you don't mind, I'm sorry about this, but the clerk has advised me to declare my pecuniary interest again, because it had to be changed in its details.
Uh, does it relate to the motion?
No, it doesn't. But you can advise me when I'm going to be able to do it.
Okay, so just remind me, we'll do that after.
Okay, that's fine.
So we're on motions to amend?
I just wanted to let you know that I have to do it again.
Thank you.
Um, are you talking about the, um...
Did you have a motion to amend the budget that you wanted to put forward?
Not from me. I gave the clerk one from Counsel McLaren. I, I wrote it up for him.
Okay.
It's, uh, got to do with traffic calming.
Counsel McLaren, did you have another motion that you wanted to put forward? No?
Just to clarify, I did have, your, your worship, but I, I'm not going to present it.
That's fine. Thank you. Um... Okay, so Counsel Neil...
Do that, so I'd be happy to move it.
So Counsel Neil has put forward a motion that the budget be amended as follows, that in the Public Works Services 2015 budget, the engineering traffic calming line be increased by forty thousand to one hundred and twenty thousand nine thirty-eight for 2015 only, in line with the amounts projected for the following three years, 2016 through 2018. Is there a seconder? Seconded by Counsel Ossanik? Counsel Neil, do you wish to speak to it?
Yes, I thought I was going to be speaking as a seconder, but this is, this is okay. Um, we, those of us that are on council know how many calls we receive, and how much concern we hear about traffic calming. And yes, in the past, uh, we may hear that all of the money wasn't taken up, and that's because the system demanded a very high bar that had to be, uh, that had to be approved. There was a full consultation and vote in the immediate area, and I can't, I always get it confused, I can't remember, and I don't see anybody that can clear up my confusion. It's either you need a six, sixty percent turnout with a fifty-one percent approval? Okay. Fif, fifty percent plus one with a sixty percent approval, I'm told is, is, are the numbers. That's a really tall bar. And, uh, I had a, I have a street in my district that desperately wants traffic calming. Uh, our engineers did an excellent report and proposal, and it just failed by a vote or two from getting the approval required to get the traffic calming in. I said at the time, and I'll say again, yes to public consultation. We need public consultation, and the new rules recognize and recommend that, but we shouldn't set the bar so high that it's almost impossible to ever get the full approval in the neighborhood. And for that reason, I, I think this is an opportunity to put money in the budget. And if indeed the uptake isn't, isn't there, uh, then, then the reality is that that money will go back into reserve. But if, if the demand is there, as I'm sure it will be, and we'll all be, uh, invited to recommend areas in our district that may need some kind of traffic calming or traffic control, and this will, will give us adequate funding to achieve those, and it still gives, uh, the public full opportunity for public consultation and public meetings. It's just that it gives the power to council to approve these after that public consultation. So I strongly recommend approval of this.
Thank you. Uh, next on my list is Counsel Ossanik.
Thank you, your worship. During the election at the doors, I had requests for thirty-four traffic-related items, and I compiled them into an email. CEO Hunt and Mr. Keach have seen the list, and it's from, you know, residents looking at additional speed humps, stop signs, more enforcement, lower speed limits around corners, or those radar speed signs. Definitely the need is there. I know that not all those areas, you know, would maybe qualify for traffic calming, but it's our job to collect, you know, the requests and submit them to staff for their analysis. And, um, hopefully with this additional money, at least some of those requests could come true, and, um, you know, that's the best that we can hope for. So this money would definitely come in handy, and that's why I support it. But there's definitely a, an issue of speed in the suburbs. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel George.
Thank you, worship. Um, I mean, this is a very, very small amount of money, and I, I don't have any problem supporting this, because it's going to have a negligible effect on, on the overall budget. But, um, some of the councils, we need to put our memory caps back on. We don't do the, uh, solicitation anymore in the sixty percent, fifty-one to sixty percent. We don't do that anymore. Council acts on a request, you put the, the request forward to the traffic department. They will host public meetings, and that's when you find out, like I did last year, that the majority of the citizens didn't want it. Um, and in fact, uh, I think Counsel Ossanik was, she, she's got that street now, but, you know... Well, it was kind of ironic, because the individual who solicited me to put the street forwards, it was the one in the end who was campaigning not to have the speed humps put in. So you just never know what's going to happen, but, uh, yeah, we don't, we don't, we don't do the, uh, the polling anymore, and, uh, I have no problem supporting the forty thousand. It's, it's a minor amount, not like the previous one.
Thank you. Uh, thank you. Uh, Deputy Mayor, will you take the chair?
I will indeed, and I recognize.
Thank you. So I'm certainly happy to support resources for traffic calming, but if remember, I think it was just the other night, that one of the things that I had asked staff about was about the money that is already sitting in the pot for traffic calming, because of the fact that we used to have this voting system in place. And so as a result, money that we had previously budgeted in past years wasn't being used. So my point is that you don't need to add forty thousand dollars of new money, that forty thousand dollars is already there. So I think it's better to use up the money from previous years we haven't been able to use, now that we have a new system. And then, at that point, if we find that we want to increase traffic calming resources, we should do it then. So I understand it's not an enormous amount of money, but in my view, it's the principle of, that's wise financial management. You use the money you've already got set aside, and then if you want to add more, you can later on. So, um, not meaning to be contrarian, but I'm going to vote against, uh, the motion to amend for that reason. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. And I believe, uh, Counsel Hutchinson was next.
Yes. Counsel Hutchinson.
I'm sorry, uh, your worship, but I think you're mistaken. I don't think that's what was said last night. They said that's what they do, in some years they do. So I'll ask the, uh, I want to ask the CEO if there's unspent money in that line, and if it, if there is, why isn't it shown?
Ms. Kennedy.
Through you, your worship. There is, um, just over two hundred thousand dollars sitting in the, uh, capital works-in-progress at the end of the year for the traffic calming.
Where is that shown in the capital budget? Or where's that shown on the operating budget?
It's shown on the tab in the binders under the capital works-in-progress, under the public works. You'll see it, there's a line there for traffic calming as a capital project.
So this motion was based on the idea that, they're always saying that, and it doesn't necessarily mean anything. Just to give some context, when we were elected, when I was elected in two thousand and six, there was only forty thousand dollars there, and almost nothing was getting done. So we more than doubled the amount, so it would be there. So, um, if there is two hundred thousand dollars, and they're going to use it, um, then fine, but, uh, I don't... But I don't... I didn't see it. I don't see why that money wouldn't be pushed on into the operating budget. Why isn't it done that way?
Ms. Kennedy... Oh, Mr. Keach.
Through you, your worship. This type of work would be viewed as a capital improvement. It's an addition to the road, so the amount of money and the life of it, we would treat as capital. As the treasurer pointed out, there's between two hundred and two hundred and fifty thousand dollars that is being carried forward. And the way we manage these projects, I would say both from the Engineering and Public Works side and Utilities Kingston, when it comes to the end of the four-year budget, the project-specific money that's left over that we didn't spend just basically stays in the reserve fund for things such as this that we see continuing on with work. What we do is carry the money forward as opposed to adding money to it. So I think one of the concerns was for 2015, the amount for traffic calming was lower than what it showed for other years. And this is the reason why, because we feel we've got a fair amount of money that wasn't spent. I think the comments that have been made tonight, the change in the process and whatnot, may have resulted in some delays. If there is concerns about the process, that's something that we can bring back to EITP at a later date for a debate. But I think from my perspective, and more importantly, Mr. Van Buren's and the traffic engineer, this is sufficient money if you add it to the amounts for the next four years.
I've got still some questions. What's the eighty thousand dollars that's shown then? If that's not capital money, what is it? It shows eighty thousand dollars under 2015. So I'm just wondering, if this other capital money's there, what's the eighty thousand dollars paying for?
So the eighty thousand dollars that I believe the council is referring to is on page 129, under the Engineering Municipal Funded, the second item there under 2015. So that is part of the capital budget for 2015. And then in 2016, seventeen, and eighteen, the amount... Sorry, 2016, seventeen, and eighteen, the amounts in round figures is about one hundred and ten, one hundred and thirty, and one hundred and forty-five thousand. That is capital funds. It is all capital funds. The amount that I just mentioned, that Ms. Kennedy had indicated as well, is also capital money that was not spent in the last four-year period that will be carried forward and added to it. So if I do the math quickly, almost seven hundred thousand dollars in total with what's being budgeted and what's being carried forward for capital funding over the next four years. And again, if you go back, I would agree, the amounts that were budgeted a number of years ago were significantly lower, but I think it shows a pretty major increase in that area.
Okay, I just want to make a comment that what happens is we don't have a continuous program. Sometimes, at least once or twice inside my own council, they've put aside the program to see what the results would be. And almost nothing has been done. And certainly not in my district, and in other districts as well. I know Counsel O'Sanick is incredibly good at ferreting this money out. So I'm not going to claim anything about her district. But if you... This usually comes forward with a request for councillors to name two streets. That's what you get, two streets. And I really highly recommend that you respond immediately, as soon as you see it. Because otherwise, people like O'Sanick are going to scoop it all... No, I'm just kidding. They don't allow that to happen.
So Counsel... The only thing I'm going to say is that the motion is speaking to the amount of money, not to the policy that we have in place. So I'm just going to ask if everyone can just keep their comments just to the amount.
Well, given the information we've been given, I don't see any reason to vote for it.
Okay, thank you. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak? Counsel Bowman.
Thank you, your worship, and through you. This is more just a point of understanding for me. If we were to approve this, the money would just come out of the working reserve and just be put onto a budget? Is that correct?
Ms. Kennedy.
Through you, your worship. It would be funded from the Municipal Capital Reserve Fund.
Okay. And so if this didn't happen to go through tonight, what would stop us from, if there was a need, six or seven months down the road, from doing the same thing?
You could do that at any time during the year.
Okay, thank you.
So Counsel Neil, you can speak last. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak? Counsel Neil, you have the floor.
Just a clarification, so I know whether to vote for my own motion or not. The figure that the treasurer mentioned, was that specifically money unexpended for traffic calming that would be accessible specifically to traffic calming? Or is that the global figure for the department?
Nope, that would be specific to traffic calming. If you give me a second, I can give you the page number.
Thank you very much.
Page 170.
Thank you very much. In that case, I would recommend that nobody votes for my motion. And that's the last time you'll ever hear me say that. Thank you very much.
That was a very passionate argument. You swayed me, Counsel Neil. Thank you. Okay, so it's on the floor. We can call the vote? Still two people to vote. And that loses by a vote of zero to thirteen. Good. Moving on. I believe that there's one other motion to amend that's been put forward. Who's the mover for that motion? Counsel Stroud?
Yes, so...
So there's a motion that's been...
Shall I read it out, Mr. Mayor?
Sure.
Okay, so I would like to amend that the budget be amended as follows. The KEDCO's 2015 budget be set at the identical number from 2014, which is two million, six hundred and fifty-four thousand, six hundred and seventy-three.
So I'll just hold you there. So the motion's been seconded by Counsel McLaren. So you have the floor. You can speak to it.
Right. So I realize that to some, this might seem like a controversial matter to bring up at this point. But I think that it's actually a good time to have this conversation. And before we have it, if anyone does want to speak to it, vote for or against. I think this is really good to have this conversation without getting distracted by what the political implication might be. Because the conversation needs to happen because enough people in the population of the city are talking about it. This is not meant to be an indictment of economic development companies in general or whether we ought to have an economic development company. So I wouldn't want it to be misconstrued that way. But the rationale for this particular motion amendment is simply that KEDCO did not make yesterday, in my opinion, a convincing case for a budget increase because they did not give us enough information. It's that simple. There's too many questions that remain. It's possible that we could have these questions addressed over the next calendar year and revisit this in a year's time. But in the meantime, I think this is a legitimate way to ask the question of what we want to see from our economic development company and how to hold them accountable for the budget that they do get, which is quite substantial. It's a difference of fifty thousand dollars. That's what the two percent increase represents, fifty thousand dollars. We were just talking about adding forty thousand to traffic calming, which is almost an identical number. It's a small number. It's not going to kill KEDCO, but it will send a message that this council is serious about accountability for what they do, and they better do a better job of reporting what it is they do next time. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody that wishes to speak? Counsel Neil.
Yes, I'm going to support the motion. I wish we gave, and perhaps this is an invitation for a future motion, I wish we gave more direction to KEDCO. Because I think... I mean, I totally agree with the rationale as I spoke yesterday. This is a substantial request of taxpayers' money. And to have eight numbers on a page and no rationale and no other information, I think is presumptuous. And so I... But I don't think defunding them or reducing their budget drastically without some kind of a sensible direction given to them that we would like you, in future, at Budget, to meet this criteria, to give us this information. I mean, we looked at lots of outside agency budgets yesterday, and we got pages. Some, we got line-by-line budgets. Some, we got pages. Now, I know they're a corporation and governed by the Corporation Act. And I also know that that means they can't necessarily have wide-open books. But there's... The public should expect, when they put that large an investment into an organization, that there's more public information than six or seven numbers on a page. So for that reason, I'm supporting this, but I'm challenging the mover to come back with some additional direction in a motion for KEDCO before the next budget process to establish a criteria that we think is reasonable, that the public could get more information about the dealings of that corporation. So, thank you.
Next on my list is Counsel George.
Thank you, your worship. And here's something I don't say often enough, but Jim knows I do this now and again. I actually agree with what Counsel Neil just had to say. We do, you know, we do agree now and again. Yeah. But, I mean, years ago, that's one of the challenges that we put forward as a council, is the accountability issue. And I totally agree that that needs to be there with all external agencies. Many members here don't know... Counsel O'Sanick and I were on the Board of CRCA last year, and again, this year reappointed. Direction has been given to the manager of CRCA to develop a new business plan, if you wish to call it that, for the operations of the Conservation Authority prior to the 2016 budget to look at potential duplication efficiencies that he can identify within the operations and such, and report back to the board so that then we can work with that when we present the budget next year. I appreciate where Counsel Stroud is coming from. But like I said, with a motion in regards to Don House, I don't know if now's the appropriate time. What I would prefer, and Counsel Neil alluded to this, is that I think what we need to do is have some discussion around, do we want to continue to provide the same amount of funding, to the same extent that it currently is? Or again, are we in need? Because we are really challenged with trying to identify where we are going to get funding for our own in-house operations, let alone the external agencies that come to us with their budgets. And some of them, we have very little control over. CRCA is one. The Police Services Board is one. They do what we ask them to do in trying to control their budget. But at the end of the day, if they wanted more, they have their own outlets provincially to go and come back to us and say, "You feed us this money. That's all there is to it, and we can't do anything about it." But KEDCO is one that we can in the sense that we fund them, I think, what was it, eighty-seven percent or something like that? So what I would like to do is continue on this idea of dealing with the external agencies, but look at something, say, in the month of February, potentially the second meeting of February, and formalize a motion to bring forward to council. And we could give some direction, potentially, as we have in the past to our external agencies. I think it was through the mayor's office or the mayor, along with the treasurer or whatever, requesting that we're in a position to allocate X number of dollars beginning in the 2016 budget. And this gives that external agency the opportunity to revamp their business plans if required and do what they need to do in regards to how their operations are going to go forward and what major effects, negative effects, it may have on potential employment and that sort of thing. But it's not cutting them off at the knees by making a decision this evening. It's giving them that opportunity over a number of months to develop a plan with their board. And unfortunately, in KEDCO's case, we have four members of council on the board to work with them and try to, as we do on CRCA, extend to them an understanding of the challenges that we face. So I'm not going to vote for this. I appreciate and I understand the rationale for it, Counsel Stroud, but I'm just not going to vote for it this evening because I think I would prefer to go the next step and look for potentially greater savings, if that's the direction council would wish to go.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor, will you take the chair?
I will, and I recognize you.
Thank you. I have a couple of concerns with this motion. The first is the rationale that we're doing this because they didn't give us enough information. Now, we've sat through all the budget presentations. KEDCO was here the longest out of any external agency. And as I recall, they answered every question that we put forward. We asked them questions about what they do with professional development. We asked them about other detailed questions about their budget. I certainly didn't get the sense that they were trying to hide anything. I think it's clear that people understand that this is a competition with other municipalities. So there has to be some degree of not showing all of the cards in public so that not every other city knows exactly what our strategies are. So there has to be some degree of discretion. They can't throw everything out there. But that's why we have the mayor and three councillors that sit on that board, and they see all the details. So I sat on KEDCO for four years. I was on their Finance and Audit Committee. I saw everything. I saw down to the check registry. I saw every... So if anybody needs information, I'd be more than happy because I saw the guts of how KEDCO operates. And you know what? There's a committee, and there's a whole board that oversees that. So I think it's an unfair comment to say there's not enough information. We made that point, that we'd like to see some more. So why not give them then that chance to respond? And then if they didn't respond, then we could address that. So we're not giving them the opportunity to respond to the suggestion for more information, or council, that we gave last night. Second question... The second concern I have is one of effect. What are we losing with this fifty thousand dollars? Are they going to cut back hours at the tourist office? Are they going to cut back on the number of small business consultations that they offer? Are they going to cut back on their summer entrepreneurship program for students? Are they going to cut back on cultural tourism, which we've already talked about as being an important part of our cultural plan? Or are they going to cut back the number of jobs and investment that they've said that they're going to pursue over the next five years? I don't know what it is that we're saying no to. And if we don't know what that is, how do we know what we could be saying no to? So I don't want to take a blind stab at cutting something that could be very important to the community or to particular businesses as a whole. So for those reasons, I would encourage council not to vote for this motion. If you have concerns about information, then we should go to KEDCO. We can always invite and ask them to come back and ask more questions, answer more questions. Thanks very much.
And I return the chair.
Thank you. Next on my list was Counsel Bowman.
Thank you, your worship, and through you. I just, in speaking to this motion, I think the message has been sent and the message was received. And my fear with reducing their budget at this time would essentially be what would be the reaction and how would they find that money? I think this is something where I would agree with Counsel George, that that discussion can be had with four members of council on the board at the time. And we can provide further direction moving forward from this. It's simply something where, I mean, we did have a chance to ask more questions. And I do think that they did understand the message that we'd like a little bit more accountability and a little bit more information. So for that reason, at this time, I'll be voting against this motion with the understanding that we'll provide further direction in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on my list is Counsel O'Sanick.
Thank you, your worship. I'm conflicted with this motion because I understand the intent, and I agree with the intent for the reasons that we've heard. But it's what Mayor Patterson was just talking about, you know, what will they cut? What are we going to see the reduction in? So fifty-three thousand, that could be a staff member. And we know that their 2020 strategic plan is very aggressive. And when Counsel George asked last night, "If we reduced your budget by a hundred thousand, what could be the consequence?" And we heard that they won't be able to meet the targets of the 2020 plan. And I think we should give them every chance to try to meet their targets and then, you know, see what we can do if they don't meet them. That's when we can tighten things up. Definitely, that 2020 plan is very long, and I want to see them do a condensed version that we can get out there in the public. And fifty-three thousand would just be enough, you know, to cover the printing of, you know, some four-page glossy brochure that's a condensed... of, you know, some four-page glossy brochure that's a condensed version, and I don't want them to see, um, to drop that. So for that reason, I won't be supporting the motion.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak? Counsel Allen, and then Counsel Hudson. Counsel Allen.
Thank you, Your Worship, and through you. I agree with, uh, Counsel O'Sannick in the sense that I think we all want to hold, um, all of the agencies that are connected to us accountable for the use of, uh, funds. And I think we've heard that at the doors while we were campaigning, and I think we've heard that, uh, throughout this week in terms of budget deliberations. And, uh, and I agree with all of that. I think, uh, the difficulty is this council, uh, we can't, it's hard to hold, uh, them, uh, accountable in the way we want to as a council when we haven't had a chance to work with them and, and set the guidelines with them. We're sort of, um, looking ahead and we're worried we're going to let it get away from us. But I think, um, I don't think we are. I think we're going to pay a lot of attention. And I think that that kind of partnership building, uh, that we need to do with KEDCO to achieve the things, uh, the objectives for the city that we lay out, um, requires a bit of trust, uh, at least at this point. Um, they've got a plan that we can hold them accountable to. The, they've got objectives for this year. As Counsel O'Sannick already mentioned, they're quite aggressive. So we can have that conversation about, um, you know, whether or not, uh, you budgeted and hit your objectives, and whether or not we can trust you with making those budgets and making those objectives and, and hold you accountable to that, uh, at the next budget session in, in, in the future. And I think ongoing with our counselors and mayor on, on, on the board. So I'll be voting against this, uh, because I want to work, uh, towards a relationship with, uh, with our member agencies and be partners with them in this, uh, rather than, um, uh, I, I don't want to be holding a, a, a rock over their head. I, not, a rock isn't a great word for that, but I, I just don't want to be threatening at this point. I want to be about building relationships at this point as a council, and, uh, that's why I'm going to turn this down.
Thank you. Uh, next, Counsel Hutchinson.
Thank you, Your Worship. I can understand where this motion is coming from because I found the KEDCO, uh, budget particularly scant this year. Didn't have a lot there. And they have shown more in previous years, not just lately perhaps, but, uh, in previous years. And there has been, I think, underwriting this is there's been some expressions, I know in speaking to other counselors, uh, some concerns about KEDCO's profile, its performance, and so on. Not so much in my own district, but in speaking to other counselors. So I can see where this is coming from, and, um, I can also, I think, my opinion is that they didn't give it enough, but it's not just them that didn't give us a lot. It seems to me that there were other organizations that, uh, didn't really give us the trends of what they're doing. If you really want to understand a budget, it seems to me, you need to know what a, an organization has done prior to the budget year and where it thinks it's going. And that gives you a more de, a decent, more decent idea where, where a organization is going and what its priorities are. As someone said, the priorities of an organization can be found where it spends its money. So it's worth looking at our own budget that way perhaps. So, and we only gave this year, and we trended forward at least and show, because it's a four-year projection, at least in part, and that, that's worthwhile. And some organizations gave us 2014 and 2015. That's something. The police only gave us this year. And I, and they often make similar dis, claims about, uh, what they're showing. So I think this is like, the horse already left the barn, at least in a general sense. And I think we do need to do something about asking or requesting or demanding that we see more of the budget trending of any organization we're going to fund. And, uh, I've been saying this for years, but it, you know, maybe it was a voice in the desert. Maybe someone's going to listen now. So, um, I'm not going to vote for this because many of the reasons are already given by other counselors, because, um, I think, um, we didn't make that demand. Perhaps we should have, perhaps the prior council should have. Um, and we're, and we need to ma, perhaps get our ducks more in our row and say, "This is what we want to see." And what I just said prior is I would encourage that, because I think it would give us a better idea of what it is we're voting on for any agents or board ourselves. So, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak? Counsel Cannon.
Thank you, through you, Your Worship. Uh, I, I think one thing that, uh, maybe wasn't, uh, maybe relayed during the presentation yesterday, uh, was that I believe a lot of, of the extra fifty-four thousand that they were asking for, I believe that their overhead through some of the things that we may be charging them, like rent, has gone up, uh, equal to or more than the amount that they were asking. I agree, the information that we received was, I think Jim maybe raised the point of the night that's where he said that, uh, it's very difficult to make a decision with a painfully small amount of information. And I don't think that we should necessarily make a decision until we get all the information. I think that, uh, having some camaraderie with external agencies is a big thing, whether we increase their budget, keep it the same, or lower it. Uh, we want to know that we're all on the same page and working with each other moving forward. But I don't think that we should make, necessarily make an adjustment until we have all the information. I don't think any of us have, have all the information. And for those reasons, uh, I'm not going to support the motion, but I do think that, uh, it was at least a good way to start the conversation.
Thank you. Counsel Stroud, you have the floor.
Thank you. Um, okay, first of all, it was, uh, thank you, everyone, for this great conversation, uh, bringing it to a close now, uh, with a few points. Uh, first of all, just, uh, a couple people mentioned, a couple of my esteemed colleagues mentioned, um, that a decrease, that somehow this is a decrease. Unless you're factoring in inflation, this is not a decrease. It's keeping the budget exactly the same. And again, and we're only talking about fifty-three thousand dollars. Um, the, on a budget the size of, of almost three million, it really is, uh, doable to pay for these extra, uh, expenses, should they be real, uh, by other efficiencies. Uh, Your Worship, you mentioned, uh, maybe they might cut this or they might cut that, uh, or they might cut the things that are, seem to be less necessary, such as, I don't know, uh, trips to Europe or, or, you know, things like that. Then maybe, uh, um, maybe we should turn the conversation around just for a second and think about it not as, uh, as a budget, but as a message. And when you have an external agency that obviously shows a sense of entitlement because, not because that's the way they are, uh, people that work there, but because they've been getting this money and these increases year after year after year, and they're seeing, they're perceived to be automatic. And, and that's, um, what I picked up on yesterday in the presentation, is that the, the, the concept that the two percent increase that they're asking for was actually a modest ask, that it was actually less than what they ought to have asked for. That was what I picked up from, from the CEO's, uh, presentation. And I think that just by giving them the exact same amount as last year, that just shows, no, you need to justify a raise. You haven't justified a raise, even though it's only fifty-three thousand. You haven't justified it, therefore, on principle, keep it at zero. Uh, not negative, not positive, just the way it was. And, uh, that being said, thank you so much for keeping, uh, this discussion respectful, and, and I appreciate the chance to have it. Thank you.
Thank you. So with that, we will call the vote. And that loses by a vote of, um, five to eight. Um, now Counsel Hutchinson, you mentioned that, uh, you'd been advised to declare your pecuniary interest again. Would you like to do that now?
Thank you, Your Worship. Um, staff was very kind to spend almost forty-five minutes or more with me last night. Well, we, well, they tried to figure out what I needed to do. So, I, I wouldn't wish this on anybody else. So I'm just going to declare, this is I, Counsel Hutchinson, declare pecuniary interest in the matter, report number fifteen dash one forty-four to the Committee of, of the Hall and related by, related bylaws, specifically page thirty-five of the 2015 draft operating budget under community services, housing and social services, employment support expenses in the amount of forty-three thousand eight hundred dollars, included as part of the administration and employment assistance line amount of four million, zero thirty-five thousand, zero ninety-nine, comma, as his spouse's employer provides a literacy program to Ontario Works. That's the important part. Unfortunately, I have to do all the rest. Now, I'm not done, sorry. I also declare pecuniary interest in the matter, report number fifteen, one forty-four to Committee of the Hall and related bylaws, specifically page thirty-five, the 2015 draft operating budget under community services, housing and social services, listed by program as rent supplement and not for, not profit, the peanut gallery can be quiet, please. Nonprofit housing providers totaling five million, seven hundred twenty-three thousand, three hundred and eighty dollars. As his employer, Kingston Cooperative Homes, Inc., participates in the City of Kingston's Affordable Housing Program. Thank you for listening.
Okay, thank you very much. Counsel Hutchinson, is there anybody else that wishes to declare pecuniary interest? Counsel Boom.
Thank you, Your Worship, and through you. Uh, it's come to my realization that, uh, there's a part here that relates to my prior declaration. Therefore, I, Ryan Boom, of the Council of the Corporation of the City of Kingston, declare my pecuniary interest in the matter of the final clause in report number fifteen dash one four-four, motion number six, that the necessary bylaws be established to formally adopt these estimates, et cetera, as it relates to my prior declaration. Thank you.
Thank you. Has everybody else declared what they need to declare? Okay, so, um, I've just been advised that because of the, of the one emotion to amend that did pass, that we just need a few minutes to revise our final budget numbers. So we're just going to take another five-minute recess. That would take us to, so nine fourteen, and we reconvene, and then we can pass the That would take us to, so 9:14, and we'll reconvene, and then we can pass the budget. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, thank you for your patience. We are ready to go. So I've asked, because of the pecuniary interest, it's a little bit complex how we're going to move this, so I just asked the clerk if he would guide us through the approval process. Mr. Clerk.
Thank you, your worship, we're pleased to help. So there are 10 paragraphs within this recommendation, and what I'll do is I'll go through each recommendation, some as a group, and I'll identify the ones that have the conflicts, and I would ask for the member to sign out and back away from the horseshoe while we take the vote. So the first vote will be taken on paragraphs 1, 4, 5, 6, 8, 9. All members of council eligible to vote. That carries. Paragraph two, that is the paragraph where councillor Hutchison has a conflict. That carries. Paragraph three, that is the paragraph where councillor Holland has a conflict. So councillor Hutchison can return. That carries. Paragraph seven, councillor Bohm has a conflict. Still one person to vote. Can everybody vote again? That carries. Paragraph 10, councillors Bohm, Hutchison, and Holland have a conflict. That carries. So ladies and gentlemen, we've approved the municipal operating capital budget. Thank you.
Thank you. So with that, if you guys want to come back, you can come back in, sign in, and I will ask for a motion to adjourn. Moved by councillor George, seconded by councillor Neil. We just have to, so if we can, please vote. Two people still to vote. And that carries. Thank you very much.